On the wrong side of the road.
So I'm worried.
Huh?
We told them to let her off our house because it would be easier for them not to. But if they let her off at home, will they go down there and turn around and stuff like the other ones?
Ah.
The first three.
Hmm. Hmm. What's happening? Oh.
My name is Noah Rechenbaum and I have the honor of being the program director for the center. This is my first year, so I'm very excited to be here. I'm super excited to work with this awesome team. We brought along some students that they're going to tell you about more about the program. So without further ado, we have Dominic Rush.
Hello, I'm Dominic. For an overview of last year, we had seventy-five middle school students that came through our doors, which is our biggest year yet. We had a high school leadership team called SERV that was also the biggest we've ever had it with thirteen students. We went on one college career field trip per month. We went to Ivy Tech in Warsaw, Grace College, talked with a real estate agent, and went to the airport in Huntington and more. Our students all had a lot to say about our program, but here are a few quotes. "After School Central is my second family." "When I'm at ASC, I feel like I'm not judged. The SERV students that come are funny and caring." "It is a fun place, but I can also share my feelings there." And that is it for me. Next up is Connor.
Hello, I'm Connor. We were able to go on a lot of day trips during the summer. That included Cedar Point, Lake Michigan, Marion Splash House, and more. SERV students had the opportunity to go on an adventure trip to West Virginia. I was one of the lucky few that got to. I'm sure I can say for most that it was a great trip. We have learned a lot of things there, especially me, I'm not going to swim. I believe that I've definitely overcame my fear of the bitterness there. I would definitely recommend doing that kind of stuff again. Now for Jada.
Hello, my name is Jada Gregory. I'm the Whitco programming assistant for After School Central this year. I graduated last year from Whitco, and so I'm just sticking around for a little longer. I would just like to talk a little bit about the goals that we have for this year and for the future. So we're going to try to stay pretty consistent with what we implemented last year. For example, our weekly schedule kind of looks like on Mondays, we partner with the library and we go to their facility once a month to watch a movie, which is always super fun for the kids. And then every other Monday, one of their staff members comes to our facility and just leads a craft or an option time with our students, and they typically really love it. And then on Tuesdays, we do character development. On Wednesdays, we have a cooking class. And on Thursdays, Purdue Extension comes in and teaches steam activities for our students, which is always very eye-opening, and they just think it's very cool. So that's been really good for us. One of our biggest goals this year is we are wanting to start a high school program. So as we've talked about, After School Central is only for middle school students, sixth through eighth grade. Last year, we had about eight, or sorry, we had thirty-five eighth grade students come through our doors who are now freshmen. And we only had four spots open on our leadership team. And so now there's about thirty-one students who don't have anywhere to go after school. And so it's, we're just very passionate to start this high school program so that we can provide a safe space for them in high school, still develop those relationships. We would want to provide a meal for them, play games with them, and just have those intentional conversations and again, provide that safe space. So we're in the fundraising stage right now for that. So we're very hopeful that we're able to raise that money. And once we're able to do that, Noah will be the head of that program. And we would meet about once a week. So yeah, those are our goals moving forward.
Great job. I just wanted to come up and say thank you again for your guys' support. I love Whitco so much, and the support that we get from the school and the staff is always incredible. I know I talked to a lot of other people who run after-school programs, and they're not all as lucky as we are, so thank you guys so much. But yes, thank you for letting us present. Do you guys have any questions for us or any questions for the students?
What are you doing for fundraising?
So right now, we have a couple grants in the works. We're hoping to, we're hopeful that they will come through. We should know about a couple of those in the next couple of weeks. And then we're also going to local businesses, various churches, individuals that we have a relationship with. The Center for Whitley County Youth is funded primarily by grants and then community members and businesses, so.
How much money are you needing to raise to start the program?
We're needing fourteen thousand dollars, and we have roughly three thousand raised right now. And that would cover part of Noah's salary. It would cover various things that we need for meals. We rent out a space to have this program, so it would cover some of that and then other miscellaneous things as well.
So we'll probably get, somehow or another, if the grants come through, everybody will know about it, and then what you need to do to get more?
Yes, so Noah obviously is already hired, but he's hired at more of a part-time position, and this would give us enough funds to get him to full-time, and then he would be in the schools even more. And his primary focus would be high school rather than middle school. And then I would stay at the middle school level as well. So yeah, we will, once we know, we will definitely be advertising it because we will be so excited that there's no way you're not going to know about it. And then we'll start the program hopefully fairly quickly. We definitely want to make sure that the funding we're getting is consistent, so it's not something we only have for a year and then it goes away. So once we have the money, we'll discuss, okay, does this look consistent? Can we start it right away and then move forward from there?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Any other questions?
So we'll probably get, somehow or another, if the grants come through, everybody will know about it, and then what you need to do to get more?
Yes, so Noah obviously is already hired, but he's hired at more of a part-time position, and this would give us enough funds to get him to full-time, and then he would be in the schools even more. And his primary focus would be high school rather than middle school. And then I would stay at the middle school level as well. So yeah, we will, once we know, we will definitely be advertising it because we will be so excited that there's no way you're not going to know about it. And then we'll start the program hopefully fairly quickly. We definitely want to make sure that the funding we're getting is consistent, so it's not something we only have for a year and then it goes away. So once we have the money, we'll discuss, okay, does this look consistent? Can we start it right away and then move forward from there?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Any other questions?
Just think that you guys have an exciting program. Whenever you're around, like I mentioned earlier, it's always full of excitement with the guys and energy. And we really appreciate, we expect that. And so I'm excited to hear about the idea of opening a high school program. So if you would circle back to me at some point in the next couple of weeks, see what we can do to help with that marketing and somehow reach for you to help expedite that, okay? I think that's important.
Awesome, thank you so much. I will definitely do that. All right, well, no further questions. I have to take some of these students to band, so we will be leaving very promptly. But thank you again so much for the opportunity to speak here tonight.
Thank you, it's a great program.
Thank you.
We had summer sports camps happening this summer. We want to congratulate, and aside from that, we also want to congratulate the Whitco Wildcats football team for their win over Prairie Heights Friday night, which was very exciting. Fall sports are in full swing, and we encourage you to check the event schedule, which are available on Event Link. Back to school, we had, a couple of weeks ago, we had parents and children coming back for our back-to-school events in all of our buildings. Classes did begin for this school year on Friday, August the 11th. We want to thank the many individuals and organizations who donated haircuts and shoe vouchers, food, school supplies, et cetera, to our students. And finally, we had our golf outing. The annual Whitco Booster Club Golf Outing was Saturday, August the 12th, and a wonderful time was had by everyone. The weather was great. Proceeds from the golf outing goes to our athletes for uniforms, equipment, and supplies. We're going to move on into reports with our principals and directors. And we're going to start tonight with Mr. Chris Evans, our curriculum instructor.
Good evening, it's great to be back. As you can see, we have some general information. Again, we are with NIET, the National Institute for Excellence in Teaching, and they will be doing their teacher and administrator training, as well as training for myself, so I can better facilitate the program here at Whitco. Our evaluation cycles, this year we are having two different evaluation cycles. Normally, it's three. Each teacher gets three. This year, we've added an extra layer for those teachers who are performing at or above a significant level, as well as have a high enough score. They will receive two evaluations because we will be adding individual growth plans. I talked about that a little bit at the June meeting, I believe. We have also started this year under the direction of Mr. Pavarnik. We are having our district instructional leadership meeting, and those will be in conjunction with his administrative meeting. So all directors, principals, master teachers will be involved in those. Our first one is next week. An NWA window just opened today, and so it will close on the 15th, so we should have some good reporting from that. And that kind of moves me into the very next category. We have adopted our ARC curriculum, and ARC has an assessment called the ERLA. And we are going to work on a, to see how congruent NWA scores are with our reading levels. Once we give ERLA, remember, the ARC curriculum has a, the assessment, which is the ERLA, and then it has a prescription for what to do with the students at each grade level, and it also then provides those supplies. So again, I wanted to thank those members of the curriculum committee that participated all year and put this curriculum forward. Our professional development, which I also talked about at the work session, did take place on August 8th. The attendance was very high. I was able to be kind of bouncing between both sessions. One was at Pearson, the other one was at the high school, where South Whitley joined in with the middle school teachers. Tomorrow is actually a ARC leadership meeting. So it is the leadership of the buildings, and it is a professional development. It helps us learn to use not only the curriculum better, but also then how to facilitate that, how to pull up our data so that can be presented to you. My goal this year would be each time the, I have a presentation, and we've given the ERLA test to begin with, is to present to you how the scores are climbing, so that you will have a monthly report, how our children are doing, as opposed to NWA, which is only three times a year. That way, you can see the most current levels. Also, once that test is given across the corporation in K through eight, there is a, part of the algorithm is it actually sets a goal for the district. And it doesn't talk about a percentage of students achieving. It is all based on growth. So I will be able to show you the growth. It breaks it down by student, by class, by school, and by district. So I hope to present those to you on a very simple pie chart graph, so that you will be able to see those things. So it will be a constant update. So the plight of our reading, as I unfortunately expressed to you last year, is about to start changing quickly. I also wanted to send a special thank you out to all the people. We had over a hundred and fifty boxes of curriculum that were delivered, and we sorted them by schools, and then we delivered them and had a lot of help at the buildings. But I wanted to shout out to two people. Ms. Snavely, who let me borrow the maintenance truck, because boxes of books are extremely heavy. So I got a chance to play with the maintenance truck, which I will be doing on Friday, this Friday as well, because our middle school supplies will be delivered. And Mr. Hollenbach from the Career Academy. He helped, he helped me load every single one of those boxes from here at the Career Academy, so I could get it out to the buildings. So it was, it was, it was kind of... He helped, he helped me load every single one of those boxes from here at the Career Academy, so I could get it out to the buildings. So it was, it was, it was kind of a labor, but the buildings have all their supplies from K to five, and they'll have six to eight by Friday. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to kind of frame this a little bit. You said a lot in short, very time, Mr. Evans, but you know, I want to commend you again and the committee for the ARC reading program. And I want to talk about the impact and the importance of that, and what the community is really focused on this in the board. Nationally, now the National Education Association is looking at that reading scores across the country. And one in five third graders naturally can read at a third grade level. That means four out of five can't read. And so reading is becoming a focus nationwide. And not, I don't like hearing that, but what I do like is the proactivity that we're doing here at Whitco, because now there are school systems that are going to have to get with the federal agencies and the IDOE. And Dr. Jenner is talking about what are they going to do with the reading statewide? Because if it's nationwide, that means it's also statewide. What programs are they going to attack with in public education to focus on reading? And so I'm, I'm very proud of the work that you and your committee and all our staff have done to put Whitco already ahead of that game. We have skin in that game. We have a highly recommended and valid reading program that we are moving forward now at Whitco. And we are also have our PD on that at our cluster meetings every Monday to enrich that program for all our staff. So it's not just a binder that's handed out and say, here's some suggestions that we can do to help our students read better. Every Monday at our cluster and all the ILTs, that's our focus. And enrichment for all of our staff is there. It gives purpose to our master and mentor teachers to go in that classroom and what they're looking for, for resources and for, and for assistance for our staff. So again, I think we're, we're ahead of that program already, and we have our skin in the game, and we're off and running. I think that's huge for us. So thank you again for your hard work and dedication, you and your team, on doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jamie Pano, Director of Alternative Services.
Hi, how are you? First, I'm going to talk about the Early Learning Center. We have been working all summer toward becoming completely licensed. We are waiting for the state to come and do their inspection for our full licensure. What this means is that we will be able to legally serve up to a hundred and fifteen children ages zero to twelve. Along with that, we are doing our renovation, which is set to start around September. And this will include new safety measures, an updated pickup and drop-off area. And again, we'll be able to serve, service a lot more children. We are very excited to have food services available for our littles. That has made a world of difference for our daily operations. We have fourteen employees and, which includes a front desk receptionist and a before and after-school care coordinator. We have adopted the high-scope curriculum, and all of our staff members participated in three days of professional development, and they will have continued professional development throughout the year. We are excited to have our homeschool pathway underway. We have twenty-four enrollments from grades, well, we service grades K through 12, but right now, we have students second grade to 12th grade. And we'll be able to provide extensions for students that may take longer or that want to participate in summer courses. Students that are enrolled in our homeschool pathway are encouraged to participate in extracurriculars. And the rigor of this program does keep the students accountable, and it helps because there are actual virtual instructors that help the students, and they're available 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM all day. And I also, I check in with the students and make sure that they're getting what they need, and I help offer my guidance and advice as well. And over the summer, we receive, Whitco received the Student Age Child Care Grant for forty thousand dollars, and this is going to be used to help grow our after-school program for school-aged children. Any questions?
You are busy.
I'm busy.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So the homeschool pathway, just to put that in the context, last week, I think there were twelve, and now it's twenty-four, so that's, that's growing, and it's growing by word of mouth. I, you've done a tremendous job, so I commend you on getting that going, Jamie. And that, not only do we have twenty-four students out there now, they're getting a much higher level of education in their homeschool environment than they were before. Not saying anything negative about anybody else, but when you have actual teachers working with students, you get just a better enriched education that way. But also, we get eighty-five percent ADM for those students, so it creates a whole new financial pathway for us as well. So thank you.
And enrollment is ongoing, so we'll continue to take.
Thank you. Thank you. From Pearson Elementary, we have Kristi Hopper.
Well, since I'm new, if I mess up, nobody will, I won't know the difference, right? Well, I had lots and lots of staff to hire, so I would be reading for quite a while. But I do want to thank all the people who came in during the summer. I had teachers to make sure I had all the grade levels covered, and we've, gosh, in the two weeks, we've hired at least three more aides, and so I think things are coming together. We're short a couple aides, but compared to what we started when I took the position, I'm very happy that we're covered to the extent that we are. So I just thank you for all the, all the help from the people who came in the summer. Also, we've been looking at extracurricular positions. I just think it's very important for kids to be engaged when they're busy, then they're not getting in trouble, and they're building relationships with staff. So some things that, as I'm learning our staff, that came to the forefront, we have student council back. So our mental health specialist, she was really interested in that, and she was excited about leading that. We have a lot to kind of put together and organize, but we have somebody very motivated and interested, and I'm very happy about that. Robotics club, a sixth-grade teacher, math and science, Ryan Oosley, has some stomach experience, and we are excited about him picking up that club, as well as the games club. So we went on a treasure hunt a couple of days ago and found a bunch of VEX materials, and we're looking for more resources and guidance, but we're excited about what that could ultimately become. Back-to-school night, we had three hundred and twelve students represented by parents and guardians. And enrollment-wise, we're at three forty-five with pre-K moving out, so holding fairly steady. And I wanted to mention, too, we have, let's see, about five advisor teachers. Because we have so many new staff, I thought it was important to make sure we organized those people to help us support new teachers. So that's been in place, and they started communicating this week. So that's been pretty exciting, exciting to see them, get to know each other, and just to be an actual resource. I wanted to mention the very massive guide that we put together. So we're calling it the PES Resource Staff Guide. And I had Tina Campbell and Trent Osborne and some other people jump in and kind of help me put some things in place. So it's very procedural, but with all the new staff, including myself, I thought it was a really nice guidebook, and we're going to continue and add an update to that. And it has a plethora of categories to it, so I won't bore you with reading all those, but that's been a very helpful resource, I think, to our staff. As far as things that I've seen in place, PBIS rotations were already there when I got there. Tina Campbell was very instrumental in helping teachers put those together. And they were practicing in hallways, cafeterias, restrooms, office procedures. And I'm watching even the littles really practice those procedures. And even older students reminding each other, like, hey, that's not how we act in the hallway. So I thought that was a great thing that they already put together before I even got there. That was really neat to see. As Mr. Evans said, we had, gosh, I think like ninety-two boxes delivered of ARC materials to Pearson. And so I just want to thank all the staff for helping Tina and I unpack and transport and check things in. And janitors were moving boxes constantly to get the empty boxes out of our way. So we're down to sixth grade, and we're excited about that. Today was our first cluster meeting, and that went really well. We had kind of a demonstration, an organizational walkthrough of the ARC materials of, you know, here's all the components to the reading program. This is how it fits into lesson one, week one. And they had a little bit of time to explore and set goals for their first week. So that was pretty, pretty neat to see the grade-level teams working together. ILT is this Wednesday, and I am leading that. The focus will be on studying commitments and purpose for ILT. The reflection is how can we ensure ILT commitments and purpose mission are carried out with fidelity and modeled for our staff? So we're going to start with some building blocks for that, for that team. And this week, it's a busy week. PTO is going to meet for the first time, so Wednesday night, six to seven. And I'm looking forward to meeting those new people and being a part of that. And I think that's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
From South Whitley Elementary, we have Joel Halsoppel.
I want you all to know that our building is bursting at the seams with kids. We've been using every available space, so we're excited. We're, we'll be sad to lose our sixth graders, but also we're excited to gain some of that space back. As an educator, I think it's a good idea. We can always steal things, and I've stolen some of the work that some of my colleagues and what Kristi's talking about, her Pearson, the procedures. And we're trying to do that also at South Whitley, some of that to bring in alignment our two elementaries to. So we're working at that, working with and continuing to work with the procedures for both the classroom and the whole school as we make it a learning environment for us, good students, for a good learning environment for our students. Our ILT will be working on improving ourselves, first of all, looking inward, so that we can improve our coaching of our staff to improve our students. We talked about the reading, for their reading, but all academics for them as people. So our ILT is going to be working at that. And I just want to commend my staff and say it publicly. I've been pushing them some with some expectations, some things I'm expecting of them. And while like anything, we have jobs, we have things we have to do that require some extra time that we don't necessarily want to do, they've been doing it. I haven't received very much, if at all, any feedback where they've been having issues with it. So I'm thankful for them digging in. You know, the beginning of the school, there's lots of new kids to get to know. We've got this ARC curriculum, which we're excited about, but is also daunting because it's brand-new and we've never taught that. And it's nice to have been through a cycle with that. So the staff has been doing a great job, and I'm thankful for each and every one of them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Halsoppel, there's an old saying in education, there's nothing wrong with stealing the best practice.
From Whit, excuse me, from Whitco Career Academy, we have Mr. Chris Benedict.
Good evening. Excited to be here. Excited for our students coming back. It's really neat to see them kind of come in the building with the transition and things have went really smooth the first week. They're all excited about being back here at the academy. So all programs, again, completing the online Career Safe OSHA training, the safety guidelines that are specific to their particular program. You know, as the kids, as the kids are out here now, they're used to that. They're used to all the hands-on stuff that we do. They're kind of back to that whole, like, we've got to screech and halt a little bit, make sure we get the safety protocols done before we can start getting to those project areas that we've, that we've done in the past. So it's, it's neat to see their excitement level of ready to get, to get going and get into that curriculum. So, you know, again, this year, we will be participating in the I Career Days through Ivy Tech. This year, they are doing something that is specifically designed in the medical health field, and then the skilled trades portion, whether that's construction, precision machining, welding, the manufacturing, and the engineering, and then business. And they'll have a separate day for each one of those groups of students to come to Ivy Tech and talk specifically about their course of study and their program in order to connect with local business leaders and just explore those career fields. We're excited about this, and we have fifty-one seniors that are participating in either a work-based learning or a capstone project that they're out in, in, in career fields, doing things that are aligned to the pathway that they studied, the pathway that they finished and completed. It's about fifty-four percent of our seniors that are, that are participating in that. So excited about that. It's kind of seeing it come full fruition to where they started as, as incoming freshmen, incoming eighth graders, and worked their way through that pathway. And now they're at that final, that final hurdle of that capstone experience and really trying to kind of set themselves up for, for where they want to go after, after high school. So RIL team, as, as everybody's mentioned, working on our long-term goals, implementing our IGPs for this year. We had our first cluster meeting today that went really, really well, all through that NIET framework. You know, that cycle one will be coming up for our evaluations for our teachers, September 11th through November 10th. And as Mr. Evans alluded to, some of those will be just two evaluations, others will be on the, on the three, the new teachers that are coming in. So excited also, this year, we were able in the summer to host the Indiana Philanthropy Alliance. And this year, our eighth-grade college and careers classes will be taking part in the Whitley County Community Foundation Charitable Champions Curriculum. Students will explore an area of a philanthropic field, and they'll write a grant on behalf of their selected nonprofit organization and present that to the Hands Foundation, and they will bring some of those people in to have our students kind of have a, I want to say a career day, a culminating activity with the nonprofit organization, organization informational day here at the Career Academy. The biggest thing we want to get out of that is our kids to understand that there are people in need in our own community, and how can they help? And what can they do to do that? So the Hands Foundation has been up and going for quite some time through the Whitley County Community Foundation and going to work with them hand-in-hand and try to get that curriculum to all of our eighth graders. This year, we'll be in the process completing our CLNA, which is our Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment. We did this two years ago. Every CTE organization has to do that. Every, all CTE districts have to complete this process every two years. Last year was about maintaining and updating. This next year, again, we'll be going back, revisiting all of our partnerships, all of our advisory boards in each one of our areas to make sure that we're, again, evaluating through a five activities, the workforce alignment, program quality, our student performance, Perkins Grant data, and then that teacher recruitment and retention. Those are the areas of focus of the CLNA, so we'll be working on that throughout the course of the year. Okay? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. From Whitco Junior Senior High, we have Mrs. Amy Evans.
I think the best way to summarize the start of our school year is Mr. Maliki was talking to me the other day and said, I know it's a good, I know it's a good start because I saw Mr. Maurer smiling. So, but it has been a great start. A lot of that is getting an extra administrator. We're having time to really work, work with our new staff. Our, our new SRO is absolutely fantastic. Officer Clark will be missed, but he has stepped right in and set really high expectations for our kids. So it's, it's been a great start. So thank you, guys. As far as what I would like to talk the most about is the branching minds, which I did see a supplemental on the school board tonight. But all of our staff went through the training last Monday during that two-hour delay, and it is extensive. And so we were lucky, in the next few weeks, I have a committee of teachers that are going to be working together with data and things, and getting that whole corporation district-wide, where the elementaries, it's a very smooth process up to the middle school, and then the middle school to high school, is going to be vital. It has a lot of really great things. In our advisories, our middle school, they have resources for enrichment, remediation, math, language arts. We are going to be using that in advisory for all our students. So even though the focus is on the tier two and three, we, we still have a lot of resources for getting our kids enriched as well. So we're going to be starting that next week and getting that into our advisory period. Positive points, I do want to let everybody know, we are going to be changing our graduation robes to, and we'll let the seniors decide, either red with blue trim or blue with red trim. I think it looks a little bit nicer, and we're all uniform. It's a little more inclusive. So I know it's going to be a change, and so there, if there's some families who can't afford a new one because they were going to use a sibling's to use a sibling's, we'll help them out for a couple of years until they get those new ones in place. So looking forward to that as well. We have our band playing at the Blueberry Festival, excuse me, on Labor Day. We also have our first early awareness financial aid night. This is really important if the kids are even thinking about going to college, and that's going to be on September sixth. And then our marching band is at the Northwestern Invitational, September sixteenth. I've gotten a chance to watch them rehearse, their theme is reflection. And a lot of the band parents, bless their hearts, they've been building the props and have done an amazing job with that. So really excited. We have a lot of seniors on the band this year, which is good. And then we'll hope to build back up, but I'm really excited to watch them too. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. The athletic director, Barry Singray.
Good evening, good to see everybody back. And it's great to start a second year with our athletes and coaches. Just to start with some facility updates, we concluded a new paint and wall graphics project in our main gym hallway. So you'll have to stop by and check that out. And then currently, we're scheduling the installation of a new sound system in our main gym, and we're hoping to have that project completed by the start of basketball season. A few program updates, fall sports are underway. We hosted a big jamboree in football a couple of weeks ago. Obviously, our varsity football team got a big win and we've hosted volleyball, we'll host junior high volleyball tomorrow night for their first home match as well. So fall sports underway, all schedules and updates can be found using the Event Link app, and we'll continue to share that information and changes as they happen. Weight training and athletic development participation, this year we've continued to see growth. We have over ninety participants in our high school weight training classes. We have nearly sixty participants in our junior high athletic development class. And we also added Parkview Sports Medicine and after-school weightlifting program that's available Monday through Thursday for all seventh through twelfth grade athletes. And we'll be working with them to even include some of our younger levels hopefully in the future as well, with just some dynamic exercises and athletic development opportunities. But all these weightlifting opportunities are for our students and for our programs and very happy to see so many taking advantage of it. A few feeder program updates, flag football, we'll be hosting flag football again this year for all K to six students. Registration ends tomorrow, but so far, we're having a great turnout. And when you get towards the end of a registration deadline, you usually get quite a few at the end. So we're trying to figure out exactly how many teams we'll have this year. But another great turnout, excited about that. Our cheer program will also be putting on a clinic this fall, their information will be sent out this week. And then our elementary, or sorry, our high school and junior high cross-country programs, we hired two new coaches and they've really hit the ground running. They've done a great job sort of reconditioning our trails out here. We want to make this campus sort of our home for cross-country because we have such a great space for it. And they've done a great job with the trails and getting the team organized from sixth grade through twelfth grade. And they're also starting a third through fifth grade cross-country program, so that information will be shared with families this week as well. So excited about the continued growth in our feeder programs. That was one of my big pushes when I got here and very happy with all the coaches sort of getting on board with that and sharing that vision. Couple thank yous, the Booster Club, it was already mentioned, the golf outing, but just wanted to thank them for doing an outstanding job with the golf outing again, and then just in talks that I've had with some of their members, looking to continue to grow it into next year. So excited about that. Already mentioned my coaching staff, but again, I want to thank them for their commitment for hosting workouts, not only for their high school athletes, but also camps throughout the summer. We had nine summer camps this year. I felt like we constant, had constant activity on all our campuses. And then lastly, just want to thank maintenance and grounds. I know there's, everybody has projects and things that they want to get done over the summer and right before the start of the school year. I really appreciate everything they helped. I thought when we hosted the jamboree the other night, our field looked great and they really did a great job preparing, and that's a lot of work. So that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, all our flag football being at the high school?
So we practice two nights a week at Whitco, and then we play in a league at Walrussee. And then we'll play them one game under the lights at the end of the season. So the last Wednesday of the year, we'll play them on our field under the lights. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Director of Operations, Rhonda Snively.
Good evening, thanks for having me tonight. I'm going to start off with transportation. We hit the ground running this year. I think overall, we did really well. It was a little bit of a challenge. Myself, Kristin, and Mike Sands were all in the driver's seat the first two days of school, so three subs on the first couple of days is, is not always easy. But it also made it kind of nice because we were there to kind of direct students that weren't sure where they needed to be. And with Mike's experience and Kristin, you know, her routing and her experience, they knew just right off the bat kind of which direction the kids needed to go as well. So that helped, helped out a lot. Always looking for ways to recruit new drivers. We have two in training, we hired one, the Sher Brandon Montague, which is doing a fantastic job. He jumped in, he's been a sub for us for, I think, a year now. But he's doing a great job and we, like I said, we had two more. I would like to look at hiring a full-time sub. I don't have anybody yet, but I have high hopes that we're going to find somebody if we can. That position would be paid like a normal bus driver, full-time bus driver, they would report every day. And if there was not a sub route that they needed to drive, we would put them on a bus with maybe a driver that needed a little extra pair of eyes or just a little assistance with maybe some, some control on their bus, which would also work to help that sub get to know some of the routes as well. So that is my, my hope and my vision for transportation. I'm also looking at getting quotes for a key system for our gasoline tanks. When they replace the fuel pump, the keys were taken out, so now every time we need to fuel, you have to go up on the dock and turn the fuse or the breaker on and off. So that makes it a little harder for sub, or not sub drivers, but drivers ed and some of the mini bus drivers that would fuel after hours are not able to do that with the system that we have now. Turning over to maintenance, knock on wood, all of our buildings are fully staffed. So that's, that's the first time since I've been here, so that's great news. We have our bleacher inspections coming up, we just had our fire alarm systems. My big project is the tower and the chiller for this building. We've been fighting it all summer long. It's on its last leg, so hopefully we can figure out something that is going to work for this building and kind of get it where it needs to be and, and cooler for everybody. Cleaning up around the buildings, I think we've, we've kind of made a good dent in a lot of the areas. Big shout out to Dustin Sheets for helping clean inside the buildings and get everything organized as far as like desks and clean out that D wing area that we're going to be working on this fall and into spring. Shout out to Mike Sands, Terrell Schaefer, and Wayne Swinder for their help in landscaping at the different buildings. You know, we've done some at Pierston, we've worked on the elementary and the high school the last few weeks to kind of get that up and looking nice. And I think they've done a really nice job. Mike Wilcoxen is taking a look at that drainage pond behind the high school. We need to get that looked at and cleared out before we start any of the construction for the D wing. So I have a quote for that, and he, I told him to go ahead and get us on his schedule to get that done and taken care of. That way we can move forward. So we're just going to continue cleaning and organizing everything and just moving on with the year. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Carrie Walmer, Director of Special Services.
Good evening. I feel like hit the ground running has been used several times today, and that's exactly how it's been. Since joining in July, I've been able to meet with administrators, building level teams, some of our families, and then individually with our special services staff. It's very evident from just being here and being involved in those opportunities that, you know, this is a very tight-knit community, who wants what's best for kids. And so I'm really excited about, you know, where we're going to go and where we can take this department. We've had a lot of movement within the first week. We've had close to fifty special ed kids come in. So Sally Gilbert, I just want to give her a quick shout out. She's been working really diligently to make sure records are requested and released to other districts in time so that we can meet our compliance timeline. She's been the driving force behind the scenes. So I want to give her a shout out and thank her for making my transition as smooth as possible. We had one hundred and seventy-five school supply bags donated to Pierston and South Whitley from our partners with the United Way of Cosiasco and Whitley Counties. An additional twenty-five bags were donated from Fox Products to South Whitley. We're thankful for those generous partnerships with them and the investment in making sure our students have what they need for learning. We also had another community partner, Lakes Area Autism Network. They donated sensory bags and a communication board that will be installed on the new playground at the Early Learning Center. Our special ed staff has been provided with extra funds this year. We have remaining money in our ARP grant to spend, so they all have three hundred dollars to spend what they need on their classrooms for supplies and materials. Amanda Johnson is going to be our Corporation CPI trainer, so she will complete the certification process next month, and then we'll be able to roll out our in-house trainings for staff in their district teams. I'm also working on finalizing some independent vendor contracts for some of our specialty areas, and I'll have that information prior to the next board meeting. As far as staffing, we still have two current openings, one for a mental health specialist position, and then we also have a mild intervention teacher position here at WCA. Over the next couple of months, we're going to be primarily focusing on areas of professional development for certified and then also for our instructional support staff. Do you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Jason Klein, Director of Technology.
Good evening. The technology department has been working hard to keep up with the needs of our students and staff, and I'm happy to report that the beginning of the school year was relatively smooth, technologically speaking. Our new Vivy presentation devices have been rolled out in almost all locations, and while there have been a few hiccups, the staff is adjusting well to them. As always, we remain ready to assist wherever we are needed and are looking forward to a wonderful school year. I feel like every time I come up here, I say the same thing, and I just want to say, you know, I'm, I'm glad that our department is one where the less you hear from us, the better, because the less is wrong. And so I don't have a whole lot to say, but I did want to say thank you to everybody in my department for making everything work as well as it has. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. And finally, Lynn Leininger, Chief Financial Officer.
I just want to share with you tonight regarding the Whitco auction that was held this past week. We have not had a auction here at Whitco for some time, at least not since I've been here in the last two years. There's a lot of things that were built up in the high school and transportation in particular. We got with all the building administrators and said that we need to see what kind of surplus items we have at the buildings and we're not using, so it'll be included in this auction. Like I said, mainly the D wing at the high school had a lot of items, as well as transportation in their storage building. Metzger Auction was who we used to conduct the online auction. The way that things are today, most auctions are online now, they're not actually coming out and doing the whole bidding process. They were, came out, they took pictures, gathered information, and I want to thank a lot of the staff for helping get things ready to go for the auction. They posted the auction on Sunday, August thirteenth, and it just ended today at 5:00 PM. The Whitco staff was notified about how to access the auction to make bids if they were interested in any of the items. Total winning bids throughout the auction, I calculated today, was eleven thousand four eighty-eight for all of our items. Payments are going to be made by the winning bids tomorrow, and they'll have to collect the items tomorrow between one and four. Appointment only through the two buildings. And they will basically be met by Metzger Auction employees to make sure everything's checked out and picked up correctly. There are some items that weren't even bid on, and they basically will be unclaimed after tomorrow. And we're going to go ahead and allow the school buildings, if they find desk or other items of interest, that to make arrangements with the administrative staff at those two locations if they want to pick them up and use them in their buildings. Our goal, I guess, is by next Monday, if these items are still unclaimed, since they've been sitting there for five, six years, they will probably scrap those and make arrangements to get those removed from the D wing and from transportation, free up storage.
Thank you, Lynn. Mr. Pervarni, do you have a superintendent update?
Thank you. I want to recognize and thank Chad Ebenhouse for a donation of a thousand dollars toward the Whitco's baseball program. I thought that was very generous. And then I wanted to just throw a shout out to all the administrators and teachers and staff in the buildings. I attended all the back-to-school nights and you could just feel the energy from all the staff and the parents and students that were there and administrators. They were all very excited to be back and to be able to play particularly outstanding buildings and attend those. And then we had mentioned earlier that in Pierston, there are sidewalk programs going on and improvements done to the park which is behind the elementary. And they're putting a sidewalk in, extending a sidewalk from the side of the building where buses come in all the way back to the park. And they ask us- We would want to contribute some funding to that. And we talked about that a little bit, that it might be a good idea to do that. The church back there is our emergency shelter, so it would benefit us too in the event that we, if we had to evacuate, we could use that sidewalk and not have students walking on the street to go back to our evacuation center. We had, we have around, the bid was just under seventeen thousand, sixteen thousand and some odd dollars, and we have just under seventy thousand dollars left in our, our bond fund that we, the refinance that we use for the boilers at South Whitley Elementary. So we, I did communicate with the Pierston town that we would be willing to donate fifty percent of that, around eight thousand dollars, we're going to help to pay to offset that sidewalk. I think it's a good community project and it's a good partnership for us to be involved in.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our business reports and consent agenda. There's an extensive list, which you've all had an opportunity to look through. So I would entertain a motion to accept our business reports and consent agenda as presented.
I move that we accept the consent agenda items as presented.
I'll second it. It's been properly moved and seconded, that we accept the consent agenda and business reports as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand. Aye. And those opposed? The motion passes. Moving on to new business, seven point one, we have authorization to provide an MTSS coordinator with a ten thousand dollar supplemental contract. Can I get a motion for that, please?
I'll move we provide an MTSS coordinator with a ten thousand dollar supplemental contract.
It's been properly moved and seconded, that we provide an MTSS coordinator with a ten thousand dollar supplemental contract. Is there any discussion?
Do we have one?
No, I want to get the authorization first, and then we're going to look into bringing somebody from within on. And the purpose of this, again, is to coordinate the MTSS. That's the branching mines that Amy was, Mrs. Evans was talking about, the branching mines, and it is part of the MTSS program. the branching mines and it is part of the MTSS program. And we want to have that coordinated district-wide. So, we're doing the same thing in each building. So, it's a concerted effort across district.
Is there any other discussion?
Does this take the place of SEL?
I'm sorry?
This takes the place of SEL? Something's...
Well, does it take the place of SEL? It doesn't really, SEL is not really, it's kind, the SEL program is gone. Doesn't really take the place of that. It takes the place more of the PBIS programs. It kind of co-ops with them and it takes the place of other discipline programs. So, it helps the transition, the students moving forward and it helps the student that might be having a difficult time at the advisory groups can meet with that student, try to identify the issues they're having and even work with the family with that. So, it kind of, it doesn't really take, it's not really a SEL program. It's more of a wraparound program for our students in the buildings for their, where they can get their, where they can get some help for their behavior issues.
Is there anything else? No questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion for this. We already got the motion. Sorry, let's go ahead and vote on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion passes. Seven point two is the approval of a full-time substitute bus driver in the Transportation Department. Could I get a motion for this, please?
I move we approve the full-time position for a substitute bus driver. I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve a full-time substitute bus driver position. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion passes. And seven point three, we have authorization to increase midday sped rate bus driver to fourteen fifty per hour. Can I get a motion for this, please?
I move that we increase the rate to fourteen fifty per hour.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we increase the midday sped rate for bus drivers to fourteen fifty per hour. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion passes. Seven point four is the approval of an educational sign language interpreter job description. Could I get a motion for this, please?
I move that we approve the educational sign language interpreter job description.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve an educational sign language interpreter job description. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion passes. Seven point five is the approval of the annual field trips and the following list of field trips, which I will not read off. You have those in front of you. Could I get a motion to approve these field trips, please?
I move we approve the annual field trips.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the annual field trips and the special field trips as listed. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion passes. We have no old business at this time. Miscellaneous administrative items, Mr. Pavarini?
Well, it looks like we'll be having our bond sale in October. So, that's all moving along quite nicely. Tomorrow and next Tuesday, Mr. Leininger and I will be out at school finance workshops that are being held that we're going to attend to kind of get some updates on school finance and new legislation and so forth that came out in July 1st. And, and I just again, want to take this time to commend the administrators and directors for their reports tonight and all the strong things and good things that are happening at Whitco. It's just incredible. Mr. Benedict, I just want to say that your numbers are just incredible and the workplace learning program, I think, is just, I just commend you for that. And I just want to point out and make a point of saying that that's not something that you inherited. That's a seed that you planted and you are bringing out full circle. So, job well done. Congratulations on that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. And miscellaneous items, the next school board meeting is a work session that follows our collective bargaining public hearing on Wednesday, September 13th at four o'clock in the Whitco Junior Senior High Media Center. The next regular school board meeting is Monday, September 18th at 6:30 right here in this room. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.